George and ask you to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, would you please call the roll?
Harley Kane, here. Ray Ecathy.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritter Bush. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a forum. I'd like to remind everyone, since we don't have microphones tonight, that please speak up so that the video and audio can be picked up. First item is to approve the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Been moved and seconded. We approve the agenda. Are there any discussion?
Mayor, are you going to add an executive session?
Yes, and I thought we had that on there, but I guess...
What's on?
We will be in tonight an executive session for legal without any decision. There any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and that's approving also the executive session.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved, and I remind all council members, if there's any item that you're voting on tonight that there is a conflict of interest, please make that known to the entire council prior to voting. You also have in your packages the minutes from the June 3rd council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 3rd meeting? Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 3rd council meeting. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. You have in your packages claims bills in between for $168,453.17. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between for $168,453.17.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills in between are approved. You also have in your packages current claims for $38,416.78. I'd ask for a motion to approve those current claims.
Make a motion to approve current claims for $38,416.78. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Current claims are approved. Next item on the agenda is communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Mr. Vaughn? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Vaughn, and the reason I'm here is two things. One, I'd like to thank the city for getting the water line in up there by 844 or 22th, up there by the entrance on. But by getting it in, if we're going to fall, we'll need the council sometime back. It was off the foot up and down 22th Street, so they all had a resolution said I could use that to draw money on 22nd to get in out of our property. So I traveled, and when they did the water line, all the gravel disappeared. And it's like, I can't afford to regravel it like myself. So I appreciate, I know you can work on it tight or anything, and push it my way out. I really need to grapple with it to get out to the house. Second off, this door, street, that little hamster up there at the very top of the hill, going up to the water tower.
Mm-hmm.
When it rains, there's a puddle, storms up, they'll swallow a car. It's huge, and somebody needs to do something, because it's a city street, and it goes up here, and it goes up to your water tower. That's where they left off with the pillows back to pass that old gate that was there. There's a, it's like, how long, it's been really, it's been around for some time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and what we'll do, Bob will refer that to public works to look at, and it has in mind as to...
I just rode around the building in that area, leave it go last Friday, and it's not done. They're not done. They're working on it. They're doing the best they can, so it's, yeah.
We'll follow, we'll take that up, and then be followed in as an item on in public works, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other communications from the public? Yes?
Robert Paul, 1327 Schofield Street. I've just, I've got a question for the council. My wife and I walk a lot, and we have noticed on our walks down the Freedom Trail, and especially along Centennial Park and so forth, what's the program on noxious weeds this year? Hamlock is really getting out of hand, and there's a lot of thistle growth right there by the waterfall in that area and towards the new pavilion?
Yes, I know our development coordinator was out last week and noticed that. I don't know, I mean, we're going to have to do something about it. I don't know what the status is as far as when we'll be able to get to it, but it's...
Is there anyone contracted this year for weed?
Yep, True Green.
We have True Green, and where that direction has been given, I'm not sure, but we should check into that. We're aware of it, that has been brought to our attention.
Okay. Also, across from Brookside, there's a lot of hamlock growing up in there.
Okay.
So by water, by the waterfall and across from Brookside?
Across from Brookside, kind of behind where Norman Pudwell's property, along the river in that stretch there, and then it's kind of starting in from where the waterfall going on up the hill toward the new pavilion. There's a bunch along the river in there.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll get that taken care of.
I know it's been a challenging spring so far.
Yes, it has. We hope to have that river cleaned up within a couple of years, that people can actually walk down close to it, and a lot of those other noxious weeds should be taken care of also.
Are there plans underway then for the cat tape?
Any other communications from the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next item on the business is personnel actions, and I'd ask for a motion to approve personnel actions A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through F. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to committee reports, admin and finance, Bob.
The next regularly scheduled admin finance meeting is July 1st, 1:00 at City Hall. As we talked about at the last council meeting, the mayor did ask the admin finance bureau to get together today to talk about airport fueling system. So we went over the two documents that you folks have in your package for consideration tonight, talking about the necessity for the city to at least step up and purchase the refueling system, so that the city can continue to have means of getting fuel. So it's, we went over all the numbers, the mayor presented his talking points, the feeling of the finance bureau that the city needs to at least endure and purchase the fueling system, so we'll be continuing providing that service and figure out what all the impacts will be afforded.
Okay, next Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
The next Airport Advisory Committee meeting will be Thursday, June 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron.
Next meeting will be the 11th of July, 7:00 p.m. at Mueller Civic Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harleen.
The next meeting will be July 3rd, 5:00 at the library.
Evans Punch Advisory Committee, Allison is not here tonight. Parks Recreation Beautification and Parks Development, Marty.
Parks Committee last met on June 4th, Tuesday, June 4th, at 3:00 p.m. at Mueller Civic Center. In attendance are Kathy Rann, Bart Sieg, Lori Sherard, Barbara Walters, Dwayne Stanley, Jerry Coligan, and myself. The meeting was visited by Karen Messin, representing the Hot Springs Firecracker 5 and 10K races. Karen had a couple of items to address regarding event scheduling and fees. Her concern is that by not being able to reschedule the 4th of July event prior to the new year, that they risk losing that crucial date for their event. Apparently, the firecracker race has been going on for 30-plus years and is one of a handful of very successful events which are recurring in Hot Springs. Karen also expressed concern regarding the application fee, as she feels the event has partnered for so many years with Hot Springs, and that all proceeds for the race go into a scholarship fund for local students. They did not have a concern with paying for the electric fee. The committee informed Karen that there is currently within Parks and Admin Finance a discussion regarding fees and consideration of adopting a policy in that regard, but that the Parks Committee on its own was not able to waive the fee for the event. She planned to visit City Hall as a follow-up and requested to inform of any upcoming meetings which may address these concerns. Kathy Rann reported on the great attendance of the open gym and pickleball at the Mueller Center, and that the summer program was up and running with high attendance as well. There's also an update on the Hot Springs Challenge Grant, which Kim had obtained, our city administrator, Kim Barbieri, obtained for the planting of six new trees. And I'm happy to report that by working closely with Joshua Larson, our community forester, we obtained the trees from Plant Smith and Rapid City, and with great work of our city crew, the trees were all planted last Wednesday, June 12th. There are four new crabapple trees around the flagpole at the library, and a new hackberry tree on the corner near the flagpole at other park, and also an uber oak tree to replace a tree that had been planted several years back on Kitten Springs. In old business, there was a discussion about the Brookside Park Shelter. Jerry Coligan had received a bid of $8,000 for materials from ProBuild. We're still waiting for bids on construction cost, and Parks is looking at possible additional sources of funding for that project. Also, as a aside, on June 30th, at the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival at noon, there will be a short dedication for the Roger Fisher Estate, and also acknowledging all who helped with the completion of the man shell at Centennial Park. Next Parks meeting is Tuesday, July 2nd, at 3:00 p.m. at Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you, Marty. Finding and zoning commission, Allison is not here. Public safety, Bill.
The next public safety meeting will be Wednesday, the 19th, at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public works, Bob and Ray.
The last public works meeting, we didn't have a meeting when I was out of town for that meeting. The next scheduled meeting is June 25th. I'll also be out of town here for much training at that meeting, but that will be June 25th. They have a bid at 3:00 at City Hall. The next public works meeting, the mayor had asked to include your issues at the next public works meeting.
Next week?
Yeah, next Tuesday, June 25th.
I have to go back down to the floor. We won't be here, I have, I have to go back to my office. We've got to be leaving this week, just a skip.
Okay.
Are we clear on what we need to discuss at that meeting?
Yeah, I can't, I have to go back. I'm sorry.
That's fine. My understanding, Misty, is you want to talk about gravel on 25th.
To access your property.
Right. And then the puddle was...
We'll have a better handle on that status, we've got to make some progress finally, giving that down. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty.
Shedco, the last meeting for Shedco was May 17th. I was not able to attend, but I have received a brief update from that on the main priorities of Shedco right now, and what they're working on. Shedco continues working on prospect recruiting for SHOCO, and we're told the prospects are very good. Student groups have continued working monthly on the build-out of a geothermal greenhouse near Edgemont. They're making progress with that. Shedco also continues work on the build bulldoze and beautify program, which we had previously discussed. Shedco is also contacted by a contractor from California, Southland Industries, who is interested in putting in a bid on a hydrothermal heating for the VA to convert from field oil. And they had heard, read about information regarding the hydrothermal map that had been obtained through Shedco as well. The next Shedco meeting will be this Friday, June 21st, at 11:00.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, I don't have anything to report. The next meeting should be the 9th of July, Monday, or the 8th of July at 5:00. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Volunteer Fire Department, we have June 8th, 7:00 p.m. and Fire Hall, we'll call it that. The topic of discussion was the June 8th county exercise for emergency response, bomb, what was at the hospital, I'm not sure what went on. They said it was very good exercise, they've got a lot of training tools on things that they need to address, for both sides of this. Very happy with that. Firefighters 1 and firefighter 2, all downstairs. They passed their comprehensive training for everything you need to be to be an F-1 or an F-2 firefighter. There's 40 of them, the tested 40 of them passed, so pleased with that. They're working with L's with Air Force Base Bomb detachment, I didn't quite get the number of that, that L's were bombing guys, would like to come down and do a training exercises down here in Hot Springs, there's a date and a time to be returned. And they have a missile fire replacement compressor, which is used to charge firefighters' air tanks, they have all those tanks they carry. They charge all their own tanks, and they have the compressor for that. They also do Edgemonts, and the fire department's conkers, it's a pretty important tool. Next meeting is at 9:00 July 19th? 9:00 July 19th? Pardon me, I'm just looking at the time. Anyway, just a note, after the meeting, these firemen continue, they go in, they train, they maintain equipment, they do all this stuff as volunteers. They don't just fight fires, they're down there many hours a week. They take care of equipment, take care of the next thing, firefighters, so I just thought I'd mention that. It's not all glory.
We're, thank you, Ron, and we certainly appreciate the job that they do. Comprehensive plan, Sam?
I'll have to report.
Moving on, in our agenda, the ordinances, we do have a first reading of ordinance 1200. That's a supplemental appropriation ordinance. You do have a copy of that in your packages? I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1200.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1200, supplemental appropriation ordinance.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve that ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion concerning the ordinance? Misty, do you have a quick summary of what that entails?
$23,100 from the unassigned fund balance in the general fund to help cover some street block repairs and maintenance required on three properties as a result of some flooding, that's correct? Snow removal, $14,000 for salaries in major gas, oil, and diesel, and I'm afraid it's probably going to be the last time you'll have to appropriate a little additional money if we have any kind of winter before we end the year. Cemetery, $1,200 for signs that came out of the cemetery perpetual care fund, and $8,650 for the library. The funding is the result of four grants they have received. So all the library additional funding are from grants. The Stephanie Miller Grant, the Library Jump Start Grant, the Dollar General Grant, and then a private donor donation that we received last year for some audiobooks they're using this year. Other solid waste fund needed additional appropriations for the $84,000 green waste pile processing project. You approved the second $40,000 payment in dispatch of price today. Some of that is being funded by grant, and we will do an additional appropriation by motion, or that grant money is received, this is the city's portion of that. And then the cemetery perpetual care fund is funding the $1,200 in signs that the cemetery is producing, so we'll just have the work done to transfer them to your general fund.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'd ask, Misty, that you'd call the roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Ecathy?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that first reading is approved. We have on the agenda the first reading of ordinance 1201, mending the airport zoning. I would like to ask that that be tabled. I'd like to have our city administrator, she gets back, refine some of the wording on that. I know our development coordinator has done an extensive bit of work, but there's just still a couple of confusing things that we need to check and locate and coordinate with the FAA. So I would ask that the first reading of ordinance 1201 be tabled until the next meeting.
I'd make a motion to table first reading of ordinance 1201, 27A, and then in chapter 27-A dot 04 dot 14 dash AZ, airport zoning, until the next meeting.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we tabled the first reading of ordinance 1201. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Go for a second, Marty. Okay, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That ordinance reading is tabled for the next meeting. You also have in your packages a resolution 2019-14, which is a contingency transfer resolution, taking out of contingency to pay for some necessary items. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-14, contingency transfer resolution.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contingency transfer resolution. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? And Bob, in the past, our admin finances worked at this, is there any recommendation from the admin finance committee?
Admin finance recommends approving all the audits.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor of passing resolution 2019-14, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. We move on to new business. First item of new business is a possible motion and discussion to schedule our full audit readout. As you know, we were supposed to have that this evening, but our auditor had a previously scheduled event and could not make it, so we would like to schedule that for the July 1st meeting. The more detailed report held at 6:00 p.m. that evening, and then an aggregated report during the council meeting itself. So I'd ask to have a motion to reschedule that full audit readout.
I'll make a motion to schedule the 2018 full audit readout, and discussion to be held at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, 1st of July, before the regularly scheduled council meeting with an aggregated report given during the regular meeting scheduled to begin. That's suddenly up.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to reschedule this. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a possible motion and discussion to approve the request for tax abatement from Southern Hills Evangelical Free Church. And this was submitted to us by Fall River County Department of Equalization, this being a property owned by a nonprofit church organization. I'd ask for a motion to approve that request for abatement.
Make a motion to approve the requested tax abatement from Southern Hills Evangelical Free Church, as submitted by Susie Simkins from the Fall River County Department of Equalization.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this tax abatement. Are there any questions or comments?
The amount...
Second. And the amount, thank you, Misty, you told me that earlier, and I wrote it down, and I didn't read it. And that abatement is for $1,266.66. Are there any questions or comments? Do you have that request in your packages? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have item C, which is a motion and discussion to approve a tax abatement from the Boys and Girls Club. And again, this is submitted by Fall River County Department of Equalization. That amount is $2,625.12. And you have this in your packages. I'd ask for a motion to approve that requested tax abatement.
Make a motion to approve the requested tax abatement from Boys and Girls Club, as submitted by Susie Simkins from the Fall River County Department of Equalization.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this tax abatement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Yes.
Can you say that amount again?
I have $2,625.12.
No.
Okay, thank you. Would you give us a curve?
It's not those two amounts together? Oh, you know what? There's two. I'm sorry. I apologize, I apologize.
Okay.
You're right. Sorry, I just had the one.
Okay.
You're right.
Thank you for keeping us on track. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, thank you, council, for voting these to these nonprofit organizations that contribute greatly to our community. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'd like to...
Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'd like to thank the council as well on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club. It means a lot to the kids, the extra money, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we do have item P. is the next item on our agenda, and we do have an upcoming new council coming on board, and we've got some vacancies in Ward Three and Ward Four. And, uh, what we'd like to do is outline a procedure that we would go about in filling those vacancies. We have had some interest in Ward Three. Allison Ritterbusch has offered her name to continue on. And, uh, Ward Four, what was the name again?
Caitlin Turner.
Caitlin Turner, in Ward Four. If there are any other individuals that are interested, we felt that properly setting the date for the twenty-fifth of July, uh, June, get those names in. We can get those in the next packages. I know some of you will not be here for that, but the next council will vote to fill those vacancies. That's one of the duties of the council. Are there any questions or discussion from the council, this current council, concerning that and the filling of those positions? I know you might be asked, and if anyone is interested, we want to make sure they get a brief resume into City Hall before the twenty-fifth, so that we can have a chance to review it and get that on the agenda for the next meeting. Hearing no further discussion, I'd ask, we move on to item E. Motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to transfer the two thousand nineteen budgeted annual operating transfers. This is from our water account, the wastewater account of a hundred and five thousand dollars each that we annually transfer to the, uh, to the general fund. I'd ask for a motion to authorize our finance officers to make that transfer.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to transfer two thousand nineteen budgeted annual operating transfers from six oh two water fund, one hundred and five thousand dollars, and six oh four wastewater, one hundred and five thousand dollar funds to the one oh one general fund.
I'll second you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make those transfers. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a possible motion and discussion to purchase the fueling system from HSR Fueling LLC. They're located out at the airport, and there's an approximate cost of twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars with an additional estimated remainder of operating costs of around thirteen thousand five hundred. You do have in your packages a talking point that explains the background of this transfer and also a purchase agreement between us and HSR Fueling. I wanted to get those before the council, before we voted on this. And, uh, you can see the background, obviously. An airport without a fuel refu, ability to refuel airplanes is like a, I guess like a body without a heart. You've got to have that opportunity to attract, uh, cross-country pilots to come land and refuel. And so we've done a considerable amount of research to go through this. HSR Fueling wanted to get out of the business. They did not actively recruit to get somebody, but however, the local pilot community was aware that there was an opportunity at, or were for a local investor to purchase that tool and step forward. And obviously, we as a city, if we do purchase that and a buyer does step forward, we would be able to, uh, to sell. What we do is, you'll notice, we've got initial cost estimate. The purchase of the system itself is, was appraised by Grims Pump, who has worked on the system, and it was agreed to by HSR of sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And we have to purchase the remaining fuel in the tank. It was estimated last week, early last week, at two thousand gallons, at three dollars and thirty-seven cents a gallon. Ed took a measurement today for our purchase agreement, and we found out there's only eight hundred and thirty-two gallons. So the good news is we don't have to purchase as much of the remaining fuel. The bad news is we're going to have to buy more fuel quickly to fill up, like fill the tank. I also, the estimated operating cost for the remainder of the year. We just got a new, uh, refueling quote in. It's less than the four dollars that I received about three weeks ago. It's down to about three sixty-nine a gallon. And, uh, so we can, we'll be needing to purchase some fuel. Initially estimated twenty-five hundred gallons to get us through the summer. We may have to go a little bit higher than that because the tank is, is low. So our minimum initial investment would be somewhere around the neighborhood of thirty-six thousand dollars to get us through the year, and maybe a little bit more if we have to buy more fuel. We've asked, Ms. Teague, to look at how we would, we would be able to afford that as a city. We do have funds in our ex, uh, we do have some funds in our general fund, unassigned fund balance that we could use to do this. One of the concerns is the impact on our airport manager. Ed is here tonight, and Ed, go ahead and ask you in front of the council whether you think you can handle the additional duties of, uh, of this fueling system? And maybe talk about some of the impact, how the impact here, here at the office.
We need the fuel, like the mayor said, the fuel is like the downer for, for something that's needed. If you get a courtesy car that brings people in town and where they spend money on hotels and all the stores and that sort of, let's say you can get the revenue off the taxes and that. Like you said, we're going to need fuel and money will be coming in all the time. It's not just a little, some, maybe a little, the tax everybody's due. There's probably one, one of the, the, the.
I don't know how they do their merchant processing, but typically those batches close out daily, so there will be an additional amount of work to do that, so.
And Ed, you've had an opportunity to inspect the fuel system when I went up, we could look at it, and you looked at it the other day. Are there any major glaring discrepancies that have occurred in the last few days?
Well, I took, I took, any of the council and see that.
So, uh, that, this, do you feel that you can handle those additional duties within the allotted hours that you've been given?
Ten dollars, boy, oh, nerd.
I didn't ask that. I asked if you could handle the duties.
He wants to prove, yes?
Ed, is the airport right now have a courtesy car available to?
Not right now. I have a guy flying in Saturday, you're allowed to shoot on the town, so he doesn't have to bring that car.
We do have a taxi service down in town. Can you share that number with him, right?
The, and again, what we're voting on is the council, it's not necessarily the courtesy car. That's something that we would have to provide internally from, uh, looks like there may be an opportunity from an excess police vehicle. We're trying to determine what the best way to go about doing that is. That's what typically other communities do. So, uh, it's not part of this decision, but it's part of what we're going to have to do to make it, make it work correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And again, the system has been inspected. It, uh, the only thing that we really want to do to it is caulk the joint between the cement wall and the base on the containment tank. We have to have a ten, a containment tank for, in the event there's a fuel leak for environmental purposes. The nice thing about the, uh, fueling system is it does provide an opportunity for us to, to make some money. Obviously, we, we buy fuel for less cost than what we sell it for, and pricing that fuel, we want it to keep its price as HSR has used in their business model to be competitive with other airports around the area. So that those people that are deciding where to fly and land and refuel on a way, on their way across country will stop here at Hot Springs as opposed to passing us by going someplace that maybe are ten, twenty cents less per gallon. We have an op, HSR has been very cooperative. They provided us with their income tax records, and we were able to look at all of their input data that they submitted. And also, we had estimates from the actual crew, fuel purchase sheets they provide to the city and for two thousand eighteen. So the fuel system does have a potential to make money. Somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to thirteen thousand dollars of fuel that we can, can make. And, uh, so it's safe to say that it will provide a modest income for the airport. And you see there on your, your sheets, it will be an investment this year that will cost us probably around seventeen thousand dollars to provide that. But by year three, I think they'll, you looked at that and felt that we would start being both in black, barring any unforeseen. And I wanted to get that, all that information out to the public and to the, uh, to the council and make sure that everyone understood that. You also have in your packages the purchase agreement, and that has been reviewed with HSR Fueling. And they concur with the prices and so forth given there. And so we expect them to, uh, to sign that if this is approved this evening. Was that long spiel? Are there any questions or comments?
One other thing.
Yeah.
City purchases, fuel system gives them the opportunity to, uh, put in a jetty to the system. I've had the cops asking if we have jetty. What part of the base here they put the jetty? We have one, one for that, it's using the jetty. Like I said, other people have called and asked if we have jetty. Have to go over the high passes.
And that's certainly, uh, you know, an item for the future to keep in mind as we continue to develop our airport. Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Are there, are there fueling hours? I said it was not something for, somebody to ask you in the middle of the night or, yeah, herself, so.
All herself?
Yeah.
Like a twenty-four hour gas station. The only issue that we've had is once in a while the on-off switch. You don't push it hard enough, it will not kick in. Ed's got that solution solved. He's got a sign ready to put up in the city. Jiggle the switches and then meet. Yes?
Actually, I've got two questions. The first question, is this the first time that the city's been involved with running the fueling system out of the airport? And the second question is about how old is this equipment and what's the projected life span?
The, I think in the past, and Ed could correct me, that the city at one time did have it, went to a private.
When I was working.
Individual. The system has been checked by Grims Pump. Within the last two years, I believe it was, they replaced the main pump on the system. So we anticipate, you know, a good ten, fifteen-year life with it. It's, uh, works well, with the exception of the magnetic switch, which we've, they've had Grims down to look at that, and it's just one of those things that you can't duplicate. So we anticipate it'll have a good life. And the other part of that is if we consider, uh, we could consider selling it. If it is a problem in the future, becomes an excessive burden on our airport operation. Or we can also sell it to help expand and get jetty there also, which could help our airport to grow and be able to accept, uh, more aircraft, turboprops than maybe so small from there.
Do you have any information why we got out of it when we were in it before?
I.
I, I don't remember. I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I was not here. I don't remember. Ed made, uh.
It was an under, whole underground system, the tanks were working, freezing, it was, Ed, you're back in, you know, the, the, the. Come on, I understood the old mayor back then, at that time, so that we're not for gas.
Well, if I remember correctly, that, that the old mayor at that time was talking about how much revenue this was going to bring into the city when he talked to them to go and for it.
Well, it was private, private company that put this.
Yeah, originally, but then Ed put in the city, took over the operations, aren't they?
No, they, they had it before. It was an underground system. Underground systems are typically very particular fuel systems. Air Force experience are very prone if they're not protected leak-wise. And my understanding that the system that the city used was deteriorating. HSR came in, constructed this system, third system that we had. It is, you know, environmentally safe and, uh, and.
So, so HSR kind of took over with, with what the city had been doing before?
Okay. Yeah, and they had a group of pilots, and I think it's been sold amongst them or changed ownership amongst them. So it's, uh, it's, it's had a history.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Yes?
And you and Ed have already talked about it, on repeat for the public's benefit. The remaining fuel in the tank, that's one guy that was on the purchase agreement. And Ed just said that's an eight hundred and thirty-two gallons, not the two thousand reserves we have. And then the final inspection, you and the mayor were talking about that, everything with the system. Ensure that all incident lighting turns, it's operational, ensure the fuel system is operational, everything that has light condition. Everything's, everything's good. Did anything you looked at, no reason from our equipment standpoint that we shouldn't be purchasing?
The current owners agree there's two fuel hookers. And they hardly need to be replaced, but they agree to replace it.
And. And I plan on going to approve the purchase. We need to continue providing fuel. And HSR being our business and doing that, we wouldn't be able to do that. I think the city needs to step in and at least purchase it initially. My concern is, well, the income potential way out certainly looks like it will, we're going to do pure tax information. But will that profit offset any additional workloads placed on the city? I don't think you folks down at City Hall are going to be tracking the finance and all those things. I'm interested to see how that works out. Is there anybody here from HSR? I'd like to thank your folks for putting consultant and training in. I'm looking for insurance from that, by side of the contract, I was hoping for a verbal assurance. And that'll be available as necessary to help office staff figure out the transition. You know, who they need to work with to get the city's accounts set up and work through that so that at the end of 30 days, the city is very comfortable with making the right decision.
Is it necessary for?
I've talked to Crystal a couple times and Miss Apperton as well, and she said the same thing, Ed, who better takes down this transition?
And throughout this, the whole system, Ed very cooperative, gave an answer to our questions. How do you?
As the city wants to how we generate money for government departments, if we can increase revenue from the airport, that's a good thing. I tend to go forward and hope that it works out. Do you would like to do like the pilots and what?
Do you have a recommendation of admin finance?
Yes, admin finance from the meeting today, recommend this, works for the system also.
And Bill, with the Airport Advisory Committee, do you have any comments and recommendations?
The Airport Advisory Committee would like to see the city pay this up.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
My comment is basically just, like, I agree that this is a necessary thing to do for the airport, but I really don't think that the city should be getting into private business and selling goods and services. Like, I don't think it's appropriate for the city to own, have its own golf course, but that's not even real there. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Okay. Are there any other comments? If not, Misty, I'd ask that you call the roles, since this is an important vote for the city.
Harleen Kane.
Yes.
Ray Hagerty.
Yes.
Phil Lukens.
Yes.
Martin Meyer.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Sam Powers.
Phil.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Thank you.
If motion does carry, and if we're in the airport fueling business for a while. Thank you, council. And again, I appreciate all the hard work.
Excuse me. The airport fueling, or airplane fueling, or the airport.
Yes. Moving on, in the agenda, we do have our, the motion in discussion is to set a public hearing on the meeting, first meeting in July at 7:10 for temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club to the, for the Centennial Park Street Dance that'll be held the 3rd of July.
Did I not shed the motion in the second on that?
No.
Okay.
No.
I didn't get.
It is been a motion then.
We just had discussion and we didn't make a motion or second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thanks for catching that.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase the fueling system from HSR Fueling LLC located at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport at an approximate cost of $23,122 with additional estimated remainder 2019 operating cost of $13,500.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
We've got a roll call vote, so.
And so we've got the roll call down. Does anyone want to change their roll call vote?
I don't think so.
Thank you. And thanks for catching that, Misty. Appreciate that. Okay, we're looking at setting that public hearing, so I'd accept the motion to pass item G, please.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on 7/1/19 at 7:10 PM for a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the HS Rotary Club for the Centennial Park Street Dance to be held on 7/3/19.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded to set this public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Got a possible motion discussion, again, to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license for the vault to be used at the Mueller Civic Center for a wedding scheduled here on June 28th. I'd accept the motion to approve that temporary beverage license.
Make a motion to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license application from G2 Lawn Service doing business as the vault to be used at the Mueller Civic Center, 801 South, 6th Street for a wedding on June 28th.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve that beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have item I is a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for the vault to be used at Centennial Park for the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival. And that's coming up this June 28th through 30th. I accept the motion to approve that license.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from G2 Lawn Service doing business as the vault to be used at Centennial Park for the Main Street's Arts and Crafts Festival, June 28th, 29th, and 30th, 2019.
Been moved and seconded to approve that beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is a possible motion discussion to approve reimbursing our development coordinator, Scott Sogi, $25 per month for use of personal cell phone for city business. And you do have a copy of the city's cell phone reimbursement policy in that, in your packages. And I believe that Scott has agreed to go by the phone usage agreement that is attached to that policy. I'd accept a motion to approve and authorize that reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve and authorize reimbursement to development coordinator Scott Sogi, $25 per month for use of personal cell phone for city business.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve that and authorize that reimbursement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, our finance officer report, Misty.
Thank you. I want to apologize for the delay in the audit regout. I wish I'd have known sooner that they had a previous application because we scheduled this date while we were together. So I apologize for anybody who scheduled that impact. And I appreciate your flexibility and I hope that anyone interested will be at the 6:00 PM meeting. I will post a notice of course, so as many council members can be there as are interested in seeing present. Thank you for sending Mary Hardy and myself to the HR School and the Finance Officer School put on by the South Dakota Municipal League this last week. We were out four days. I just wanted to kind of give you an update of some of the things we covered in four days. They were very informative, very definitely worth our time. We talked in the HR School about creating values-driven customer service culture and staying professional when things get personal. As interesting as that sounds, it's as interesting as it was. A strategic approach to interviews, performance evaluations, and dismissals. And these were put on by a professor of business at Dickinson State University who's been teaching management and resources for over 20 years and is a consultant. So they bring in good speakers to talk to us about these things. South Dakota Retirement System, new hiring forms and recordings, and best practices for interviews and dismissals. And then the Finance Officer School, in addition to bringing in comedians and motivational speakers, we also have breakout sessions. And some of the things we talked about were special assessments, basic accounting, FAA and SD DOT regulations for municipal airports, which is actually my favorite one to attend. I've never attended anything quite like it before. It was put on by people that I've worked with since I started. And our new engineering forum, KLJ, was also there. So I made good contacts, got to meet people face-to-face that I've been working with for years and got a lot of good information about that one. Doug Kirkis from our loss control insurance provider, South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, talked about safety issues in cities. We had a World of Liquor breakout session that was talking about liquor licenses, not drinking liquor. And I was probably the biggest yawn, but after I tell you why, the one breakout session for DENR Water and Solid Waste Funding was also one that we participated in, probably the most glory, but that's not a very interesting subject. Engaging your community through effective social media. We had Heather Gittertall, who was an owner of a marketing company out of Sioux Falls called H Squared. She spent 10 years in finance and city administration and then went into marketing. So her viewpoint and perspective on effective ways to use social media as for cities was dead on because of her experience in doing it. We had a tax levy and valuation for TIPS session where we spoke with Wendy Sumler from the Department of Revenue, who is a specialist in all things tax-related, including TIPS. So that was really interesting as we had some conversations as a community about taxing from a financing lately. And then the last one was municipal sales and excess tax refresher. Very made an excellent contact, who's helping answer the questions that we recently have had about airport licensing and fees and taxes. I had been getting kind of pushed around for the last couple of weeks as I've been trying to get those answers from the Department of Revenue. I made a great contact there and she committed to helping us make sure we get it done right. So it was a great time and I appreciate the opportunity to go. And I know the administrative assistant was also loud and had a great time in the session. So thank you for letting us do that. We've been real busy in the finance office. In the summertime, we go from about 40 to 50 employees to about 115. So payroll every two weeks gets a little bit bigger of a job as we go into the summer months and it's been fun for the fun stuff that's happening at the fun, to the golf course and with the recreation program. So that's been keeping us real busy. And today, we received, I just wanted to let the public and council know, you'll be getting an email from me, but I got it at the end of the day. We received enough funds to fund our DARE program again into the 2020 budget year. We got a $2,000 donation from the vault in Hot Springs to continue to fund that program. Each year, different businesses step up and do that. And we're lucky to have the program. Bill Wainman does an excellent job. He brought it to our town and facilitates and hosts and relates the driving force behind it and our community supports it and all the fifth grade is applying. So that's real cool that that'll be continued into next year.
Okay, thank you, Misty. We have a city administrator's report and we missed the report and the city administrator.
And where are we?
So just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight in my report tonight to the council. We were able to attend an airport meeting in Spearfish. Bill, I thank you for being a part of that. Ed, the FAA, South Dakota Department of Transportation Aeronautics was there. We discussed an opportunity to expand our airport. Some of you know the Rapid City is losing some capability to house civilian aviation as a result of closing some hangars so they can expand their commercial capability, which will mean that there'll be about 30 or more airplanes that are looking for a place to nest. And we would love to expand our ability to build a hangar for them here. We have a waiting list of 11. We'd like to build at least a 10-place hangar. There are grants available. The nice thing about the FAA grants are that they're 90% grant by the FAA, 5% is funded by the state. And we as a city would only fund 5%. So for example, an $800,000 hangar would cost the city $4,000. That's the good news. The bad news is that $800,000 has to be paid upfront. And our obligations in this year, 2020 and 2021, would preclude us from doing something like that unless we had a tremendous loophole. One of the things that would help us immensely would be the fact that we could get funding through the peeling and sun mining contract at the airport. As I reported before, that is in limbo, right in the hands of the solicitor from BLM to determine, first of all, who owns those mineral rights, whether we would be able to get the funding or not. However, if BLM were to claim those mineral rights and allow peeling and suns to mine on our land, that money still has to be used by FAA regulation to make improvements on the airport. BLM couldn't make it, would have been their regular budget just because we as a city can't take that and put it in to our regular budget and has to go fund things at the airport. So we are hoping that we can get a breakthrough in that area soon. And we still keep that option of expanding our airport on the horizon. Again, we're still actively seeking to have a maintenance operator come down again because the city does own that airport now. We would get the tax revenue from such a business on the airport. So we're working it, but it's one of those things that unfortunately, we just can't get Misty to squeeze enough money out of the piggy bank to help fund it. We've got the 4th of July coming up. I know, keep close, we had some issues last year with traffic control on the bypass. We're hoping to get some, order some signs to help slow the traffic down and ensure that we have a safe fireworks. I know little kids and sometimes even big kids get a little bit careless crossing the streets. So we want to make sure that those people that come down the bypass may not, maybe just passing through but not wanting to visit a fireworks show or are going slow so that we can avoid any accidents. Just got a call late this afternoon. I mentioned that we have prepared a summary of how we would hope to get our sidewalk funded. I had had a call into a policy advisor from Governor Noem's office. He returned the call this afternoon. Hopefully, we'll get together committee sometime next week, maybe even late this week, to discuss opportunities as to how the state can help us fund that sidewalk. So we're hopeful, remain hopeful on that. I think it would be a great addition to our community, taking advantage of a construction project. But also, more importantly, it is a safety issue and we do have that documented and And I still believe that that's an emphasis that we need to continue to place in our downtown areas. It fills up more. We've got to have wider traffic lanes to provide that extra margin of safety. And this is the last council meeting for some of you. And I just want to close by saying a sincere thank you for your service to the, to the city in this, in this arena. As you hear from the committee reports, this isn't just a twice-a-month job. I know all of you have gotten phone calls, there are issues that you've helped resolve. We try to make our council meetings run smooth, but there's a lot of work and discussion that goes on in each of the big decisions that we make in the committees that you serve on. A lot of times, there's controversy that comes up, and we don't always agree. But this council has been a very professional governing group, and you serve a very important role for our community. The ordinances that you pass, monitoring the city finances, and setting a direction for the city to go. And I believe this council has done a great transparency. You've asked good questions, you've addressed issues, and your service and your work is much appreciated. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done, how you've served the community. Marty, we're going to keep you on Parks and Recs. We hope that we'll see you there, and they'll do a tremendous job of getting us goats and, from goats to planting trees and so forth. Sam, appreciate your, your work. It's good to have that young, young voice, and we really do appreciate that. And Harley, thank you for all you've done, the story of all the mission. We just appreciate the efforts and the time that you've invested in our community. So I would ask that all of you, in the heart, please, there are going on. But you're not done yet. We have an executive session, so I ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'd like to bring a, this is complicated.
Okay, please state your name and. Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm at Old Five Forty-Five North Bridge. I'm present in here for a while, and I've got this, I'm concerned about the desperate thing showing up, obviously, that I've been in it twice, and walk walk painted, and.
I believe that you were in City Hall, and I believe that you were told that those crosswalks will be painted within the next week or so. And one of the things that we're working on in the area of safety is for the new road design, that we are absolutely trying to make it a safer downtown environment. So if those are your issues, they are being addressed, and you have been told that they're being addressed. Right now.
I will be addressed. My address issue is the bridge there by the dam. Well, not dam, the water hole. I'm not sure who is in charge of that, or, but that's the worst piece of work we've ever seen about us, ever.
Okay.
It was budget for.
If you can, you can take and take that up with the Public Works Committee. Right now, we're in a council meeting, and I'm asking for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for Neil? Second.
Been moved and seconded, we go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The absolute stuff.
Okay.
Okay, we are reconvened. The time is nine oh one. I would accept the motion to adjourn.
Oh, we can move to do it.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all.